Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. It is 2:00. We're in the Sierra Room at the Community Center as we started this morning. We're going to take up item number 20. This is Community Development and Public Works. This is regarding conceptual design for the downtown Carson Street project. And I think the staff is going to, if I missed, I talked to the city manager briefly before the meeting here, the staff is going to present from square one on up. And then we'll have a chance to ask questions. I think, you know, if we can, we'll ask board questions during, but if we can hold them until afterwards, then we'll have board questions, then we'll have public comment, and then we'll just see where it goes, okay? Yeah. Disclosures are in order. Go.
I want to disclose that I own a business, Adele's, that might financially benefit or be injured by the corridor project. And where the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation on behalf of all the citizens of Carson City will not be materially affected by the possible risks or benefits the corridor projects might have upon my financial interest in Adele's. And if there are any financial risks or benefits to my interest in Adele's, they are no greater than that accruing to any other member of any general business, profession, occupation, or group that is affected by the matter. And therefore, I can and will lawfully consider, participate, and vote in this matter pursuant to NRS 281A.420.
Okay. Mr. Plummel, you ready to go? Is that, or you want to start, Nick, or does...
Good afternoon. For the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director, and giving the initial presentation with me is Transportation Manager Patrick Pittinger. For the record, this item is to approve the conceptual design for the downtown Carson Street project and direct staff to continue to implement the project design schedule, including working with the downtown property owners to establish a commercial area vitalization district. That's the action we're seeking today. As you mentioned, we do plan on giving a presentation. For those of you, we've given this presentation a number of times. We've had a couple of community workshops, open house. We've been to the RAC and RT, and the Redevelop, Regional Transportation Commission giving this. So with apologies to those who have seen this presentation before, I'm sure there's a lot that haven't. In terms of letting, of us getting through the presentation, I think the presentation as we go through it will answer a lot of questions. So if we have any choice in it, we would prefer to get through the presentation rather than answer questions as we go along on each slide. I think we'll answer a lot of questions through the presentation. So breaking the presentation down a little bit, I'm going to go over some background of how we got from master plan in 2005 to a downtown project today. We'll go over the conceptual designs that have been developed. Then Patrick will talk about the traffic impacts. And then I'll wrap up with some information about the project timeline, where we've been and where we're going. I presented this information, I started with these slides at a couple of the last presentations, and it's, it's actually some slides that Public Works found, taken from a presentation on a rural development conference a couple of years ago. It's a presentation by Philip Walker, who wrote a book called Downtown Planning for Small and Midsize Communities, of which per that, per that book, we fall within that, that size. And he gave this planning, this presentation of the same name. There's some good information, just by way of background, talking about why you do downtown development in general. So I just want to take a couple of minutes to go through some of the points that he's made about downtowns. So why are downtowns important? It's our communities, it's where our history occurred. It is, that's certainly where some of our older historic buildings in Carson City are located. It's the cultural center of our town. It was a, it's, and it's, it's owned by everyone, is what, is that term. And, I mean, I'm going to go into the master plan a little bit that we went, but in meetings we've had around the community and neighborhoods all around the community, everybody seems to identify with the downtown as a focal point of the community. And it's also our, it's our Chamber of Commerce photo opportunity. I mean, it really is the, what, when you think of Carson City, I think you think of pictures of the downtown. These are some things that can prompt changes to a downtown plan, which is what we're proposing. One of those things that happen around the country is transportation changes, such as a bypass. That's exactly what has occurred in Carson City, causing a significant change in traffic around the city. So here are some of the benefits, you know, why you even start to do this planet, this type of planning effort. There are benefits to the, to the economy, it's quality of life issues, and ultimately, it's also a marketing tool. And we'll talk about that a little bit more going through this. So looking at this slide here, just pointing where that red arrow is, design, that was from his slide, that's the point we're at in this process right now. There's more to come. Well, you don't, you don't just design it and we're through. And, and, you know, leading to the next slide, it's not a silver bullet approach. We've never said that we do this, all our, all our economic problems are solved, we walk away. There's more that needs to be done in terms of economic development, business attraction, last bullet there, marketing and promotion. So this is, this is, in addition to some of the other benefits, this is part of a tool for, for the downtown and the city in general for marketing and promotion. Just a couple of final slides on this one. Just because it relates to kind of the design we'll talk about, you know, one of the things that, that is generally said for downtown planning across the country is to provide as much on-street parking as possible. That's how, that's how it's put in this book. So we've, we'll talk about parking a little bit as we go along, but it is generally accepted as, as planning practice in its downtown redevelopment that, that parking, on-street parking is good. And again, it says here, locate wherever, wherever possible. So let me move on from, from that and get back to, come back to Carson City now. As I was saying, in 2005, we went through a citywide master plan update process. We went out, we had conducted neighborhood meetings all around the city. We knew at that time the freeway was coming, it was under construction, but not, none of it opened yet. We learned very early from the community that they identified with downtown. So as a result of that, we, we did a specific planning focus for the downtown area. And we came up with a vision for Carson Street that we'll kind of go over a little bit in these slides. So since that time, we also know that the freeway, I won't go over this in detail, we know the freeway's been under construction, portions are done. In 2017, it's scheduled to be completed all the way down to Spooner Junction. So as a result of the, of the master plan and the planning back then, we've continued down the path of looking at redeveloping downtown Carson Street. And that's been reflected in, in the traffic studies that have been done since 2005 through the Regional Transportation Commission. We've had infrastructure upgrades, the improvements to Roop Street, Stewart Street, other, other street capacity issues to, to allow for such a project to occur on Carson Street. And we've had these very, more recently, the, the public input regarding the, the 8% sales tax projects and this project specifically. And as a result of all that, in April 2014, funding was made available through the implementation of the 8% sales tax. And the Carson Street is a project of a number of projects, including more corridor projects and the multi-purpose athletic center and the animal shelter within the sales tax plan of expenditure. Also to note, in recent, recently, the Regional Transportation Commission adopted complete street policies, which the Carson Street project would follow. And the funding that was made available for Carson Street through the sales tax, through the sales tax funds would be about that, the 6.8 million, which is to pay for basically the above-ground improvements that you see driving down the street from Fifth Street to William Street, as, as we'll show in the conceptual plans. And then the utility fund, estimating about $2.1 million in the sewer water and other underground utility work. And as they, those last two bullets on each of those, it's, as Public Works terms it, long overdue street improvements and repair and long overdue utility upgrades would be included as part of this plan. So I think at this time, yeah, getting into what's the proposed, as a result of the past and the workshops up to the present and comments we've had, we started with this 2005 concept that was two lanes everywhere where there was no turn signals, it's just two lanes, no turn lanes, and parking up and down the entire length of the street. This is a, this is a model that's used in, in many communities across the country. And this, again, this is the 2005 concept as well, but where the intersection is. But through the process that we've heard since 2005 and things that have changed, so we've heard concerns about on-street parking slowing traffic and question was to eliminate or reduce it. With the complete streets, we've had some discussions about bike lanes on Carson Street and some of the benefits of that. Patrick will go over. And also, in order to accommodate emergency services response, we've come up with this preferred conceptual design that's, we're calling, it's a three, three-lane design. So it's one lane in each direction plus a continuous turn lane. This design includes five-foot bike lanes on either side of the travel lanes and some minimal, minimal parking. So there is parking to kind of meet those objectives of providing parking on the street. And it's not, it's not, the parking on the street's not necessarily about a number count of needing additional parking, but it's about putting some parking where it can be used, where it looks like there's activity, and, and just for convenience in some cases. And again, I think this is the, the first one was the concept showing what it looks like, where there's a light signal on streets, where there's not a light signal, you still have the continuous turn lane, there's some, you know, across there, you can continue the, the pedestrian improvements across the, the cross streets there, but there are cross streets there. We continue to keep those as, as is and have, and have parking. So again, just a comparison from the 2005 to the 2014. And again, so for the, for the parking, you'll see, you'll notice there's two or three, depending on two, you know, where you are on the block, two or three parking spaces. It leaves, it minimizes those potential conflicts. It allows you to make those parking spaces extra long so that you can pull and maneuver in and out much easier without interfering with traffic. And as I go through this, you know, I also had, so these are just going to be some oblique photos of the proposed design that I'll go through here. As I go through this, I'll also note that something that wasn't in the packet, but actually another issue that came up was, in addition to all of those, there's, there's some frequently asked questions back there that I think answer a lot of questions and have been included in the packet and on the website a long time. But one of the interesting was, was that we're removing trees from the medians and increasing the urban heat island effect, which is, which is certainly an issue in a lot of, in a lot of places across the country. But I do want to point out, in doing account, we have, I think, 17 trees in the median currently on Carson Street. And of those 17, there are varying conditions, not all of those are viable long-term trees. There are, some of, some of them are larger certainly. So there would be, to remove the medians in that, there'd be 17 trees removed, but by a rough calculation, there'd be approximately 70 new trees, not including any, many other trees remaining, like in front of the Capitol, in front of the state legislative building or the, the Attorney General's Office, for example, and the landscaping, not removing any of those, but there may be some that need to be removed and replaced. But just by a rough calculation, more than, there'll be a net gain of more than 50 trees in the project. So actually, we're, we're creating more shade in, through this project than there is currently. So this is what, this is what the sidewalk would look like, and this is just a cross section that shows kind of what type of amenities you get in this width of sidewalk. This would be the sidewalk, what it looks like, where there's no parking space. You know, there's typically in downtowns, a four-foot or so section up against the buildings where you can put tables. That's also a place for merchandise displays, A-frame, you know, sandwich board signs, things like that, that you still have the travel way for pedestrians, a clear space for that. And then you have nine feet or so for tables, trees, planters, and other amenities for pedestrians. Going over these next two slides, so here's where, here's the section where there is a parking space, and you have a parking space there next to there, so the sidewalk's narrower, only 12 feet. You still have room for some amenities, but not as much. But where there are parking spaces, depending on what business is there, what time of year it is, you could use those parking spaces for other, for not, other things other than parking the cars. You've got, put them back into the pedestrian realm by putting, building a temporary, temporary decking there to make that dining space, for example. And finally, before I turn it over to Patrick to talk about the, the traffic issues, I, we do get questions about the economic benefits of it. So, and I, and I've included and talked about these in the past. These are pulled from an economic study, basically on case studies on past projects around the country. These particular ones are in California where that the study is noted. And, and part of what the study says, so there are things that, that benefit. For example, vacancy rates decrease, retail sales grow, the public investment spurs private The TOT going up, that relates to tourism increases for downtown areas and property values increase. You know, what they do say is that you don't necessarily see all of these, it's, it's very individual to a project what the benefits are, but these are some examples of the benefits that there are. They don't say you will, in your case, you will see all of these benefits, but, but there are certainly many economic benefits that, that past projects have shown to, to come about through these projects. So at this time, I think it is time to turn it over to Patrick to talk about transportation.
Can we ask questions where we're at right now?
I need to hear from you guys. You want to complete the whole shot and then we'll, I mean, I just want, I don't want to...
If it's a quick ques, I, I mean, I would...
Yeah, it's quick.
Yeah.
On the street, you had, I don't know, I forget which slide, I apologize. Sidewalk showing at 20 feet. So it's 20 feet on both sides. What is the, I was trying to get the total width of, from one end to the other. So you've got 20 and 20 on each side, and what is the street measurements?
It's, it's, yeah. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, it, the total is 80 feet.
80 feet across from one to another, right? Okay.
So the basic cross-section is 20 feet of sidewalk each side and 40 feet.
And what is the length from Fifth Street to William Street? What is that distance?
Fifth Street to William, Fifth Street to William Street is 3,300 feet.
3,000?
3,300 feet. As somebody noted to me, about seven-tenths of a mile measured in a car.
And just, you said the new sidewalks, where it's narrower and have parking, is 12-foot wide. What is existing sidewalks, as we sit today?
Existing sidewalks are anywhere from six to nine feet, depending on, on where they are generally through the downtown core.
Okay. And I'll ask, I'll hold the other questions till we come back later. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lee. This, this chart that's before you, I'll, I'll talk about the graph first because that's a prominent feature on this slide. That shows the traffic volumes from 1972 to 2014, just taken a few months ago. As you can see, there used to be a lesser amount of cars, which increased steadily over the decades, peaking in around 2002 in the neighborhood of 40,000 cars per day. And since then, there have been precipitous declines in the amount of traffic. It's, it hasn't been every year, but overall, there, it has been decreased from about 40,000 trips per day to about 17,000 trips per day. We've highlighted on there where, when the freeway was first opened in 2005 and when the next section was opened, the Fairview Drive in 2009. As you can see, there were significant decreases associated with that freeway opening, but the decreases have continued. Just in the last year, we had another 9% decline in traffic. And that was, and it's been five years since that last portion of the freeway opened. So we can see that that has continued. We believe that the road in its current configuration was needed, given the previous conditions. It was a US highway, US 50 and US 395 used to be owned by the state of Nevada, and it was carrying a lot of vehicles and a lot of large trucks as well. But certainly, times have changed, as Lee has already described, and we no longer have the need for the facilities that we have out there. And in fact, there are deficiencies with what we have out there as it relates to safety. And obviously, there's no parking on Carson Street as there, as there is proposed in the new project. I really want to highlight the, the safety issue. Just recently, I've, I've mentioned a few of these statistics before, but in the last couple of days, I've seen some more of them. The, this, this type of project is also referred to as a road diet because it's getting thinner. And the federal government just yesterday released additional information that the average reduction in, in all crashes for this type of project nationwide is about 29%. And they are actually promoting this type of project nationally as a, as a proven safety measure that can be implemented nationwide. Some of the issues that we do have right now are the fact that you're walking, excuse me, you're walking a distance across the street of, pardon me, of about 65 feet and...
What was it?
What? No, I'm good. 65 feet. And, and under the project, you'll only be walking a distance of 40 feet. You'll also not be crossing two lanes of traffic in the same direction, which does cause safety concerns. We've actually have had incidents where the first car will stop for a pedestrian, but the second, the second will not and unfortunately can impact the driver. Speed is certainly an issue. All the studies show that even small changes in speed of vehicles has a very important impact, either positively or negatively by direction, as far as the severity of injuries that are caused when pedestrians and bicyclists are hit. So this is a, an important aspect of this project is the safety. We put parking control and loading up there because those are a couple of the aspects. As this is a conceptual plan and a design, there is more work to be done as we move forward. There are details to be, to be determined as you go forward. And some of the things that we will be looking at related to transportation, traffic, are things like parking control. Would we continue to implement a two-hour parking control on those, on those small parking areas? Or would there be a different type of control, longer or shorter? That's something that we would be certainly looking for public input and input from the adjacent businesses as we go forward through the design process. Regarding emergency services, we have certainly, oh, I'll leave it for now, just for now, just for now, so I don't forget. The emergency services, we've certainly reviewed this with, with Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department, and they're both comfortable with what, what we have proposed here as far as their ability to respond. Regarding bike traffic, we do have bike lanes on this project. The concept is to have a bike lanes on Carson Street. But I do want to point out that a lot of the benefits that you do get from these bike lanes aren't just for the bicycles themselves. In addition to that, out of that 40-foot overall width of the, of the pavement we just answered for Supervisor Shirk, 10 of that is in the bike lanes, which affects your ability to have better sight distance at the corners, your ability to turn, turn movements at the corners. It also provides a buffer between the vehicles and pedestrians and the parked cars. And it also assists us with our snow removal. The city does snow removal now on Carson Street. The city would also do snow removal after this is implemented, and this has been designed, being conscious of the need to do snow removal in the future, which will continue. I just want to, I want to note before I move on that the RTC did act to recommend this design at a previous meeting. Couple of notes, just for the frequently asked questions. There will be some diversion of traffic onto adjacent, onto adjacent parallel roads, primarily Stewart Street. And while we do expect there to be some diversion of traffic onto other roads, we actually expect that the, the amount of traffic diverted on those other roads will actually be less than the, less than the traffic decrease they've already experienced. There's already been a decrease in recent years in traffic, and any additional traffic would still keep those traffic levels below what has historically been there in the past. We will be looking at the traffic signals further in the design as far as what, what fine tuning would we do to make sure it performs as best as possible. All right. Now, reason why we have this slide here again is that I want to illustrate the differences between 2005 and 2014 as it relates to the actual traffic flow. The biggest concern that we receive from a transportation perspective is that somehow that this, this project would result in significant congestion. And, and I want to specifically illustrate the changes that we made to ensure that traffic would continue to flow on the road. Compared to the 2005 plan, we now have a continuous center-left turn lane. There's a misconception that, that one lane in each direction means that there won't be any opportunity to make turns, but that is not the case. As you can see in the 2014 plan, we, we do have the opportunity to make left turns at all intersections. Let's see, we also have, have reduced the parking. The one on the left in 2005 did have a significant amount of parallel parking, which some folks were concerned with as far as what impact would that have on, on people's ability to drive through the corridor. Now that the parking is much, much easier to access, there wouldn't be any significant lines of, of parking cars. And we will have the ability to locate those parking pockets in discussions with adjacent property owners and the public, and also to, to try to keep them away from the traffic signals to avoid impacting the traffic signals operations. We believe this project helps the city infrastructure, not only the utilities that were previously mentioned, but also providing new pavement, which will replace older aging pavement, and, and also providing us the ability to address some Americans with Disabilities Act compliance issues that we'll be able to take care of as part of this. So in summary, we are, we are confident that the, the design that, that is being proposed today is capable of handling the traffic volumes that we're experiencing and that we, we are forecast to experience in the future as well.
All right. We're, we're almost there. I'm going to end, end with this slide with a little discussion about what we've, where we've been with this planning process over the recent months, what we've heard, and where, where we're going. Up there on the screen is the project timeline with the, in the middle there is kind of this, we're in the middle, is this last, that's the last six months of 2014, and we're kind of in the, in the middle of that now. We were at the Board of Supervisors in Ju, in July. So this is, this is the timeline that we presented to the Board of Supervisors, I believe, in July, to go through this public outreach process that included workshops on September 16th where we got public input. We took it to the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee and Regional Transportation Committee in October with the goal of coming to this meeting in November to get approval of the, of the conceptual design at this point to move forward from here. Along the top is kind of the entire timeline, the longer timeline going out to construction of the project through 2016, and then even starting here at 2017, doing the Curry Street design and Curry Street construction so that, which is in the core, part of the, part of the downtown project per se, but we don't want to be tearing up Curry Street and messing up traffic on Curry Street and Carson Street at the same time. So that's been phased out to a, a later time. So generally, we have, we have this timeframe of planning getting to this point. Should we move forward from this point? Our next step, as mentioned in the, in the title of the agenda item, is to start the process to implement a commercial area vitalization district. That's the, the Nevada name in NRS for a business improvement district where the, the property owners come to the city by petition is one of the ways it comes, it comes in. I think that's how that will probably be done in this case, to create a district whereby they are assessed, and that assessment would help pay for the additional maintenance costs to the city of these additional sidewalk improvements. It's, it's run by the property owners, and the property owners can also use the funds for other, for other things to improve their, their business district. So should we move from here? That, that's the next step. We'd work directly with the property owners to initiate that, work with the District Attorney's Office, go through those processes, as well as starting, getting the final design team on board. And again, with the, with the idea being generally, construction will occur through, I'm sorry, design will occur through 2015 and construction in 2016, which is a non-legislative year. Certainly from this point, if we move forward from here, we would come back next, next time we're before the Board on this, we'd have a more detailed project design and construction schedule and public outreach schedule. It's not, it is not that detailed at this point. Finally, at the bottom there, you see the Oversight Committees as, as approved before the Regional Transportation Commission and the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee. As we've kind of defined those, those committees' roles in this, they are, it is to provide a forum for public information and comment at various stages of design and construction, to provide a forum for public information and comment regarding the status of project budget during design and construction, and to provide recommendations to the Board of Supervisors for its consideration regarding final design elements. So with that, as I noted, we conducted the public workshops. We, we received 90 written comments as a result of those workshops, actually the 90, we've received about 80 as a result, direct result from, from those workshops with the forms filled out, with an additional 10 for about 90 comments that are received. They're all in your packet, so if you submit a written comments, the Board of Supervisors has those in their packet.
Did you mention Muscle Power?
Oh, that's right, yep. With the exception of one, Muscle Power submitted a letter of support of the project that I failed to get into the packet. She's here to talk, speak to that, but that's the one missing. And you've received a couple of, I, no, I don't know that you received a couple. I received any, two emails just today, one in support, one in opposition, from downtown businesses and property owners. And then finally, I'm seeing if John Rutledge is here yet.
Yeah, John's here.
Thank you.
When you're done, Lee, I think it would be a good time, John, one second.
Yeah.
That we're going to bring John Rutledge up. He'll talk about the Cav, the so-called Cav District Survey that, that he conducted. That would probably be a good time for Board questions, and my recommendation would be after that for a public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so you want to get through this, then you want to get?
Then, John. Then I think it would, that would flow best.
Okay, let's see where it goes, and that's fine.
Can we not ask staff the questions, add their presentation, and then wait for John, then ask John our questions for him?
I think it's okay, so we'll try that and see how it goes. I mean, I just want to make sure that everybody gets a chance here, so go.
And that's just what I wanted to note, that you do have a piece of late information that has some graphs. That is from John Rutledge, one of the downtown property owners that has coordinated with the other property owners. They've invited city staff at Times to come give them a presentation, learn more about it. But he's gone out and talked to all the property owners and businesses himself, or with his, with his group at least, and has compiled some results that I let, let him go over, but to know that you do have information from here and that's part of late material.
Not now, John. Well, come on up, come on. All right, all right, come on. Jim, let's hold on to the questions here, and we'll get, we'll get you, Jim. So we'll get all these questions out.
Hi, for the record, my name is John Rutledge. I've been given far too much credit. This has been driven by Linda Ritter and Dana Friend, who have just been extraordinary. For those of you who don't know, I'm an attorney here in Carson City. I have an office in downtown. And on behalf of the Property Owners Association, I've been asked to present some findings that we were able to put together. I believe you've all received them, but just in case, I brought some we can hand out. I even photocopied them on fancy paper, so.
Did anybody have late material? Okay. Would anybody out here like a copy?
I brought 40, so we'll see how far they last. Please share if you run out. The gist of it is that we had a phenomenal response rate to the synopsis. The questions, as you'll see, that were posed are set forth on the first page there. We had an 86% response rate. And of those 86% of the downtown business owners that responded, the numbers were staggering. 94% are in favor of the street redesign concept, and 91% are in favor of the proposed Commercial Area Vitalization District. Needless to say, we're very excited about the overwhelming support. Dana, Linda and I are here to answer any questions you might have. If you'd like to go through the pages one by one, we can. The bar graph on page one does a good job of illustrating in the, do you need a copy?
We're putting it up right now.
Okay, great. Late material. There we go.
I'll get it.
So you'll see, indicated in the blue there are the affirmative responses. And the, you'll see at the bottom are the, the design concept separate apart from the Cav. The red are the, those who responded in oppose and opposition.
Why don't you read the question so that people can get a little, read the question out loud, so.
Sure, the first question? The first question was, "Do you support the street design concept proposed by Carson City, the concept picture for which was attached?" And additionally, we have the additional source of more detailed information at that particular website. The responses are indicated on the bar graph on the left, blue being affirmative, red being opposed, and the orange indicating the parcel owners that did not respond. Likewise, for question number two, which I will read from the paper, it's kind of cut off there, is, "Are you interested in continuing to explore the creation of a Commercial Area Vitalization District with the understanding that the final petition for creation has yet to be developed, and your final approval will be made only if you approve of the details of the district, including assessment amounts?" The responses are indicated in the bar graph on the right, blue again being affirmative, red being in opposition, and orange being non-responsive. Those numbers are based upon assessed valuation, which is how a Cav would be formed, rather than street frontage or square footage. The numbers, if you'd like those, I have those as well. They are based upon individual properties themselves. 84% were in favor. By that, I mean regardless of parcel size, regardless of building size, the total number of parcels that are directly affected. 84% of those that responded were in favor of the street redesign, and 89% in favor of the vitalization district. On pages two and three of the materials, you will see, broken down on a address and per parcel basis, the respective responses, again, left being street redesign, right being the actual, the Cav District. Likewise, on pages four and five are the two respective maps as demonstrated in color. You'll have in green, those in favor, in the red, kind of almost mauvish orange, those opposed.
Is that the right page?
I believe so. Yeah, yeah, the color, the coat colors are at the top. Can you shrink it down a little bit? Maybe do a view, reduced view?
Zoom out.
There you go, go down to like 75, there you go, or 50. There you go. Yeah. So you'll be able to see that the purple are the state and government-owned properties. The red-orange dark close color of which is opposed, and the green, kind of yellowish, is those in favor of the street redesign concept. The next page, which is the same map, has the colors denoting those in favor and opposed and exempted from the Cav District. So just so you can see the kind of graphical layout, the oppositions tend to lie at the outskirts of the north side with the most fervent, those most fervently in favor in the core of downtown. And on the last page, this was, I was hoping this would be really helpful for us. It has a summary of basically all of the information that we know as of now, broken down by the numbers for those of you who are by the numbers, and we have graphs for those of you who are prefer graphs, and maps for those of you who are map kind of people. We're here to answer any questions you might have, and would be happy to do so.
Okay, all right, we'll hang out. Why don't you sit down in front there, John, and we'll see where we go.
Thanks.
All right, now we're up for questions. Jim, you want to go?
If I may go back to staff, I'll start there, so I won't forget what I wrote down. Could you go to slide number 29? Yeah, that's it. And it says Lancaster, property values up in the area, up 10%. So when you, when you do these projects, property values increase, is that correct? Property owners gain?
That's what the study indicates.
Right. So when we invest money, property owners within this area would actually benefit by the value of their property going up, correct?
That's the idea, yeah.
On, if we're narrowing the streets by the lane control because it's safer, then why, why don't we expand this from one end to the other for the safety measure alone? Why aren't we reducing other areas as well? Or is that on the horizon?
Let me just add that the eighth sense sales tax, the projects were, included corridors, which includes most of Carson Street from the north end of town, south end of town, and also William Street and US Highway 50 going east from downtown. We're starting with this portion of downtown Carson City. We believe this is the most intense area. This is the place to start. We have not done the design for the other corridors, but we don't believe that we're envisioning this type of improvement, you know, for citywide application. But there are certainly some aspects that could be considered in the future when you're looking at those other corridors. But of course, there are different characteristics. Obviously, they're not downtown areas, there are different traffic volumes, and we'll have to look at what improvements are appropriate in those areas when we do the design there.
I understand that, that we haven't designed those areas. I'm saying, is this concept of narrowing the lanes going to be consistent throughout, let me rephrase it, throughout other corridors? Will you reduce lanes in other corridors? Do you suspect you may?
I mean, potentially, for example, South Carson Street is six lanes. When the freeway goes around, it probably doesn't need to be six lanes, but that, but again, that's a discussion. You know, what you do with that extra space remains to be seen in some detailed design and working, working with that corridor. But certainly, the different corridors are, are different in terms of their traffic volumes where you, where you might not want to go to the two lanes at all.
Can I, are you asking about reducing lanes or reducing lane widths?
Reducing lanes.
Yes, there, there are cases throughout Carson City where we are looking at reducing lanes if, if there's not enough traffic to support the number of lanes that are there.
That was, okay. We're reducing lanes for safety reasons, but ironically, we increased the speed limit, like in front of the mall, we went from 25 to 35. I don't need a response, but I'm just thinking it's unusual. The bike lanes, I understand you said would help with the snow removal, and I understand that, and with the safety of people crossing the streets, I understand that. Where do the bike lanes connect after Fifth Street and after William Streets? Do they connect to anything? Or you're right back to riding in the lanes of traffic?
Well, there, there are other facilities, you know, for example, there are, there are facilities on Fifth Street that can be used. But once again, we, this is part of an overall corridor project that is going to be looking to the north and to the south as we move forward with this project. So while there are some existing connections, we would envision that while the planning hasn't been done yet, the design's not done yet to the north and south on Carson Street, that is something that could be accommodated as we move forward.
So you'd be looking at connecting this to those other corridors?
That is correct.
And if you could go back, I think it's either slide 17 or 19. That'll work. The conceptual drawings here are, are we saying, I'm, I'm looking at the buildings on the left-hand side with the facade that they have. Is this going to be part of it, or is this just an artist's rendering? Because this is, is this what you anticipate the property owners doing, is to make everything look similar along that, and you have other slides that are similar in the aspect as well?
Yeah, no, and the buildings are whitewashed out to de-emphasize them for like, so that the highlight of the project and what it shows in color is the, the street improvements on the deck. So, so no, this, that's not, that's not intended as part of this project.
I understand there's 85 parcels, but how many property owners are there?
We can get that answered.
Obviously, if we don't have that, we'd have to look that up. There are obviously some properties that have, where, where the same person owns multiple properties, right? That's a.
On the improvement district, do we have an indication of what that would cost yearly for the property owners to contribute? Is there a dollar amount, high and low, just out of curiosity?
It was estimated previously, when we, when we were first, before even getting to this level of design on a square foot basis, Public Works did a cost estimate of maintenance based on square foot, rough estimate, that it would be about $50,000 per year for this, for the downtown corridor, above what is spent currently on maintenance.
So the district itself would contribute $50,000, and roughly, if there's 50 property owners, that'd be $1,000 a year, roughly, if there's 50 property owners, correct?
Yes, depending on, well, it would be split up, and, and that remains to be determined. So with the, this gets into kind of some detailed discussion with the Cav District, but there's different, you can do it any number of ways. You can just do it per parcel, but that's probably not fair because some have very big parcels. You could do it by, you could do it by assessed valuation of the property, so they pay their proportional amount based on their assessed valuation. You could do it based on, proportionally based on their frontage on the streets, and, you know, maybe they pay more frontage directly on it, a little less on the side streets, for example. So that, that remains to be seen exactly how that gets split up, but there's any number of ways to do it. But in total, it will, assuming those initial estimates are correct, in total, it will be, end up being about $50,000 per year.
Has any existing businesses, if we're expanding the sidewalk, are the anticipate, are we anticipating businesses moving out front, such as a restaurant? Have they come aboard and said, yes, we'll move out front, build it, and we will take our, our business out there and serve food out on the sidewalk? I'm just curious.
I would say generally, yes. I mean, we've had the positive feedback from, from a couple of the restaurants that they would like the ability to do that. I mean, you know, they haven't, with that, it's very conceptual at this point, but we've had positive feedback from some of the restaurants that they would like to do that. In fact, we have a restaurant under renovation now that is not waiting for this and is going to take advantage of the side street to do some outdoor dining. So there's a, there is a desire to do that.
How many vacancy on Carson Street between this area? How many storefronts are vacant?
Do not have that information.
Too many. Okay.
Are there Board questions before we open up? Okay, we're going to have some public comment. Okay, we're gonna have some public comment. Anybody wanna weigh in? Johnson, come on up. Haven't seen you for a while.
Not since Nevada day.
Right.
Maybe you didn't see me, I don't know.
Well, I did.
Tom Johnson, I'm the owner of 311, 305, 307 North Carson and 318 North Carson Street. It's in that picture. And don't take a lot of time, we've only worked on this project for 25 or 30 years, I'm not sure, had a lot of different iterations of it. I'm awfully excited about it. I've talked to all my tenants that are there, some of the restaurants you were asking about, they're very excited about the possibility of sidewalk dining, you know, the Thai restaurant, there's a whole Thai concept, I guess, of sidewalk food, which I don't know what, what that's all about, that she's excited about. We love the project, we're ready to step up and pay our share of whatever it is for our properties, and hope you guys like this concept, and we're looking forward to see it going. Thanks.
Okay, Tom, thank you. Hang on a minute, we don't, no, no, we don't, we don't do, I mean, I understand people, but let's just try and keep it orderly and business, okay? I know, I know that people naturally clap for you, Mr. Johnson, that's fine, but we're gonna try and keep that down, otherwise, we're gonna have, you know, we're just, we're trying to keep this under control. Okay, Doreen, come on up.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Doreen Mack with Lofte Expressions, and as you know, we've been working on this for the last five years. And I'm very happy to know that the numbers that we had turned into the city on the business owners that wanted this are still all there. This has become a community effort, and everybody has pulled together to make this work from all entities. It is really our best interest to do this, and the Downtown 2020 Group is behind this 100%. We've started this group, and we believe in this, and we know that it's the best interest for our city to keep our downtown vital and active, and I do hope that you approve this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, that, the lady in the wheelchair back there, I think.
May I speak from here, please?
See if we can get a microphone back there, hold on.
Oh, I have a loudboard.
Uh, we gotta have it on, we gotta have it on a tape.
I'll come forward.
No, we got it, here it comes.
Thank you very much.
We can hear you now, thanks, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
State your name if you could, please.
I'm Helen Jean Baker. I moved here from Fallon three years ago, I've lived there 75 years, pardon me, I'm not that old, anyway. I lived there since 75, and I've always been interested in Carson City because I have kids who live here, and I come to visit them, and I go shopping. So although I wasn't a resident, I still had an affinity for your business economics and so on. My question does relate to money, and I need clarification, please. I see the figure 6.8 million for streetscape. Am I right for that figure?
I, I'm hearing a nod, yes. Bring the microphone just a little closer, Jim.
Okay.
There you go.
I, I hear the figure 6.8 million for streetscape?
That's correct.
Is that just for Carson Street from Fifth North to Williams?
That's correct.
That much money for what's on the surface that we see?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you for letting me speak.
We need your name for the record, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Helen Jean Baker.
Hi, Helen, okay, thank you very much.
And I want to say that coming here has really clarified a lot of my doubts about this project. I wasn't able to get to, to pass meetings, and I just had a lot of question about this and questions about that, and probably scrambled thoughts by a reporter in the paper. I only had what was reported in the paper. The man in front of me is laughing, and I know the old saying, I know it's true because I read it. But I do appreciate coming here, and my, I am still bewildered. 6.8 million for seven tenths of a mile.
And 2 million underground work.
That was from another source. I'm talking about...
Yeah, from another source, but it's 2 million underground work, that's right.
I know, but the 6.8 is just for what's on the surface.
Why don't you talk a little bit about what 6.8 million, how you get to that number?
Darren Schultz, for the record, drew the short straw. $6.8 million, that is, that is to improve the, the 80 feet that we discussed from building face to building face, 80 feet across, for the, just over seven tenths of a mile. I think, I forget what the square footage that, that is included in that, but that is sidewalks, curb and gutter, asphalt, and then really, it's, it's all the appurtenances that we're gonna add to that, which are the, the paving, the paver stones, the stamped concrete, a number of, the streetscapes as far as the plantings, the planters, the trees, you know, the fancy stuff that you, you see in the wayfinding signs, places to sit, benches, alcoves, that sort of thing, that's, that's what's gonna be included.
Streetlights, traffic signals.
Yeah.
Darren, if I may just ask, it's roughly about 290 square feet, just to let you know, and it's...
It's gotta be more than that.
Well, not if it's 300, 3,630 feet long and 80 feet wide. Am I wrong?
You gotta add a couple zeros.
2 million?
Add a couple zeros.
I forgot a zero.
Maybe.
Okay.
Couple zeros, that's...
A couple zeros. Yeah, we should leave that off the 6 million, a couple zeros.
If I have it calculated right, I think it's just below $30 per square foot.
Per square foot, right, okay. Well, I had that number right, so I was coming to it.
Okay, that's correct.
On the underground utilities that's going in, the water and the sewer, you're gonna do that regardless at some point, I don't know when.
That's correct.
That's gonna happen.
Yep.
So I know replacement costs, and we've talked about it, is line is here, you dig up, you place one next to it, and then you connect, and it's nominal for the replacement cost. Is there any cost incurred from the, or let me ask you, I guess a better way to ask it, is the gutter and sewer alignments will be part of the 6.8 million dollars, right? For the drainage to go into the sewer, that's not part of the sewer, is it?
Well, storm drain, there's, there's existing storm drain in Carson Street now, and with this, the, the inlets into the storm drain will be changed because we're changing the way the lanes and the curb, curb and gutter is. So yes, there is, there is added cost to storm drain to move those inlets, but that's really relatively small.
Okay.
Talking big picture wise.
But the lines themselves would be replaced regardless if we do this project, correct?
That is absolutely correct, yes.
All right, so I just want to clarify that.
Sure.
It's not because we're tearing up the street we're doing it, it would be done anyway. At some point, those lines would be replaced.
Right, and we'd be tearing up the street to do it, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
But not spending eight mil, 6.8 million dollars to do it. That's the difference. Okay, thank you.
Darren, before you go, how much longer can we wait before we tear up the street?
Before we fix the lines? Uh, well, it, it does at times keep me up at night, because it's, there's, there's very, very old lines, some of the oldest lines in Carson City and Carson Street, and the problem is, is if we have a failure, it's the failure that, that does a lot of damage because they're so old, it's not just a simple little break. So when, when would we get to it? It's, it's in the high priority as far as the way we have our reinvestment money that we have programmed, it's, it's in the high priority to do this section.
So it'd be better to do it in 15 than 16?
Absolutely, or 14.
Okay, so you'd like to start tomorrow?
That'd be fine with me.
Karen, go.
Darren, the age of this area, does that contribute to the cost?
Yes, yes, it does. The, the, the lines are so old that, you know, when you go through and do it, you know, every connection has to be redone because it's, the material, we don't even use that material over, the, the joints of this, this water line are lead joints, I mean, that, it's, it's old, it's old, so.
Okay, other public comment? Come on up and then get, Mr., I think it's...
My name is Gloria Diala, I'm with the Downtown 2020 Group, and my husband and I also have a real estate rental business. I just want to remind everybody that this is a historic part of Nevada, and Nevada, of course, you go to Las Vegas, everything's torn down, if there's 15 minutes of history, they get rid of it, and whatever, and I'm very proud to live here because of the history, and I know I have relatives who were from Europe, who were just charmed by the Wild West kind of history that abound is here when they visited. So I think that's an important thing, and restoration of almost anything, I see them restoring Ford Thunderbirds for a million dollars, I mean, things like that, restoration is expensive stuff. So I think we're getting off pretty cheap. We're having the, we're modernizing this drainage system, as he said, and yet we have the opportunity, since they're ripping up the streets anyway, now they're gonna be redone, why not do it so it's pretty, and it enhances the historic flavor of northern Nevada? Plus, this is the capital city. I mean, that we've had TV programs that mention Carson City, whatever, it's a very well-known small town throughout the world, not just here in Nevada. I mean, I think we have international visitors who come here all the time because they've heard of Carson City. So I think we should take advantage of that and do the best and show the pride that we have in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on, no, 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 wait, come on up, Darrell, come on, I got you.
Good afternoon. I'm Darrell Reedy, I own Arby's, think you know my stance. I would like to address this study that was done with a small handful of downtown people that are being offered $9 million to improve their immediate vicinity. Nobody asked me what I thought. In a very short amount of time, we raised 4,000 signatures from local citizens against this project, just a handful of us. In two afternoons, just Bob from Shell and myself raised over 100 signatures from managers and business owners north and south of the affected area that were very anti against it. In that, those two days, I had one person who said they were for it. So my results were even more, were stronger than these results. The obvious impact for us is gonna be reduced traffic, period. I've heard the proponents of this call it a gamble. If we're spending $9 million on a gamble, and the only thing that has been said for sure is that it will reduce traffic for those of us north and south, I don't particularly want $9 million of our money spent on a gamble. We were not asked, and there's way more, more businesses north and south than a, than a handful of under 100 in a seven-tenth of an area stretch of road. Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell. Anybody else? Who? Come on up, then Donna, then...
Good afternoon. Victor Honain, business and property owner in Carson, downtown Carson City, would like to point out that my business will be negatively affected with traffic count. So as traffic goes down, my business goes down. But just to answer my friend's comment, doing nothing will keep traffic going down. It's going down every month now. I can feel it in my business, and my friends who own gas stations also that are affected by this. So doing nothing will not help. Why revitalizing downtown is gonna help everybody. My type of business might not survive this environment, but I cannot really stand a, obstruct this project because the type of business I am in, it won't be fit. So I, I take a courageous stand to tell you, you have to go with this project because downtown need to be revitalized, need to bring people in. It's no longer a place where traffic go through. I've been driving the street at least 10 times a day from Fifth to William, and I basically programmed to stop at every place where pedestrian tried to cross. And countless time, I have to jump up because somebody, where I stop in my lane, somebody in the other lane didn't see, and almost hit a pedestrian crossing. This type of thing been done all over the nation, in countless towns, countless cities, and 99% of the places, it's been successful. And they all did main street, they didn't do side street on this type of project. That's why I believe to, to have a future downtown, a future Carson City, to have things that will make this place prosperous, things has to change. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor, okay. Donna, then, and then Pepe, wait, wait, wait one second, then we'll go there. Hi.
Donna Anderson, Muscle Powered, Citizens for a Walkable, Bikeable Carson City. As Lee and Patrick said, that we had a board meeting, they presented to us, and Carson, Muscle Powered fully supports this project. And I can say as a pedestrian, crossing Carson Street in that area, and actually, it's worse with the medians, because not only do you have four cars that you have to get, that four lanes, four potential cars you have to get past, that from the median, they can't see you coming. And so it's much better to have all of these wonderful trees that actually provide shade. Right now, the trees in the median only provide shade if I get stuck there, trying to get across. So anyway, yeah, I did have one question personally that just thought of recently. When did, was Carson Street widened and the parallel parking take, or the, actually, it was angled parking taken out?
So the 60s, 65s.
So we're kinda going back to a better time.
Some would say that, some would say...
And then also, I, I would just personally like to say that I hope that as the design goes forward, that permeable surfaces are looked at wherever possible, because that does help with drainage and runoff, and even the heat, the urban heat, some, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just for a moment, interrupt the public comment?
Sure, go ahead, and then I got...
Supervisor Shirk has a presentation that I must apologize to the supervisor, I misunderstood the sequence of it, but might it be possible for him to present that now, and then we'd be able to continue with public comment?
Pepe, is that all right with you? What, he's been asking, so let me do that, and then we'll go to Jim here, so...
Yes, sir.
Come on, and then we'll, then we'll sneak over.
I hope I still married to this. Jose Noriega Paz, also known as Chef Don Pepe, listen careful because it's not translation in here, okay? I, I am all pro, all the things which been proposed in here. I've been in towns and in cities, especially in Coral Gables, Miami, Florida, and in other areas of the country, where this type of project have been very successful. I have one concern, okay, I see all this money spent, 6 million, 2 million, 3 million, is any consideration to make people know, like the lady says, Carson is known all over the country and out of the, internationally, how are we going to let people know to come to visit Carson City and see all this improvement? That will cost a lot of money. I mean, I think this will have to be some type of marketing, something being done, is that being taken in consideration, how much money it will take to let the people know about this project? And I am all pro, all things who are, you know, I, I don't like to be, I associate myself with all people, I like to present with young people, you know, for all far enough with me, but I, I think this needs to be done. What will be done, if this is approved completely, for the people to know in the state of Nevada and out of the state of Nevada, that we will have such a beautiful downtown. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chef Don Pepe, okay. All right, now we're gonna go to Supervisor Shirk. Jim, I'm sorry, I didn't know that you had...
Lee, if we could switch, yeah, thank you.
Have we seen this before, or is this new information?
I have not, no, sir.
Well, I don't know if it's, if it's new or not, but regardless, I'd still like to make the short presentation, if I may. And y'all look way different from down here.
So does the top of your head.
Touche, touche. That was good, that was good. First off is, I don't know if many of you know this, I, I know some people, the 2020 do know this, and city staff knows this, but I brought forward from a citizen, Mr. Fred Brown, who came up with the schematic of how to narrow Carson Street. And we did a presentation together to the 2020 group about our idea of how to narrow Carson Street. Actually, it's his idea, but I supported him in his attempt to show these drawings to the 2020 group and to the planning commission as well. He also incorporated the, the handrails that were taken down, would put back into the downtown area, and would have had one lane of traffic each direction and diagonal parking in the center of the street. As far as I know, I don't know if anybody, any other individuals came forward to submit ideas of how to narrow the, the street other than myself. And if you'll just bear with me and join me on a walk through downtown, as you see right here on the screen, this is the first project, starting from one end of town, going to the other, and then I, I double back and come the other way. So this is Jack's Bar. I know it's a historic building and, let me see, it's arrows. There we go. This is the inside of Jack's Bar. Sorry, I've never made a presentation from here, so be patient, I may mess up. Next, we have attorneys, and then the next is a vacant lot. I'm not sure who owns this lot, and I'm not sure what's going to occur on this lot. Should we spend $7 million here? I don't know what will happen to this lot. Next is the Hookah Lounge, comma coffee, and next we have, I'm not sure if the same owner owns this or what will happen to this particular lot, but I'd be interested in knowing that, as I would with the other lot as well. From here, we move to St. Charles Hotel in Frickin' Fox, that's a hotel, and a eating establishment. What is kind of interesting here is you can see the handrails are still in place from that. I know, I've talked a little bit to staff about the existing posts that are here and the complications that will cause for the improvements. And that'll be a cost impact to the city as well. Mom and pops, and what was interesting between these two properties is Third Street, and what was discussed this morning is that Third Street will be shut down, it will be using redevelopment funding, and I think that's great. I think it's fantastic. I think we're using the right funding to do this project down the line. I have not seen any drawings on it, but I think it's something that could help the community. From here, we move to more attorneys. From here, we have a hair salon. From here, it's not an antique, it is actually a attorney's office as well. Here we have another attorney's office, real estate. This is the Attorney General's Office, and access to this is not permissible. No one can walk in that door. This is the Attorney General's Building again. Access to this is only through and into the lobby. This is also, finishing off that whole block, is another Attorney General's Office. Then we have the Secretary of State, then we have a, the vapor store, then we have a gym, then we have an antique store, then we have the Adams Foundation, and then the new establishment, which Lee just alluded to earlier. And then we have a retail shop, and this is, actually, I, I'm sorry, this is what you alluded to the first time, what's going in here, is, is eating establishment, more than likely. Is that correct? Okay, all right. And then, the next one, it, sorry? The next one is attorneys and real estate, horseshoe club, a casino, another casino.
It used to be an attorney's office, by the way.
Oh, I don't want to talk about that one.
Well, the second floor of that one was where I started practicing law, right in those windows up there.
Where, here?
Go back, go across the street.
This one?
Nope, top of the horseshoe club.
Oh, is that window, that balcony yours?
Nope, the balcony's not, but see those windows right next to the horseshoe club?
Wait a minute.
Right there.
Right here.
Those are my office, those are where I started practicing law in 1973.
I think I see your image on the mirror.
You do. Looking down on speeding traffic. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Good point, no problem, no problem, Mayor. I think I left off at the parking of the Nugget, soon to be the ice rink. This is the Mint. We have the State Museum and the last building of the State Museum. This is our new location of the Visitors Bureau, which is great, by the way. Upstairs is another realtor, downstairs is another hair salon, and to the left is a parking lot. And here we have another hotel, and then we have the bike store, a psychic, another realtor, parking lot, and another eating establishment. Coming back the other way, we have the Arco Station, who you just spoke up here. That's parking in the Arco Station, a hotel, that's parking off-site of the hotel. This is a parking lot, or parking street between this and the museum. That's the Children's Museum. Then we have Back on Track Motel. Hopefully, the Children's Museum would be great if they could purchase this and expand, but I'm not sure. We have a coin store, we have another gas station, another parking lot, more parking, and then another coin store. Then we have a casino, a sitting area between the casino and the State Museum, parking on the street. We have sushi, and upstairs, we have a gym. Moving down the line, here we have a dance studio in front and behind another attorney. Here we have a restaurant and another real estate. Another restaurant. Upstairs, if I remember correctly, this is the Veterans Resource Center and another gym. Another eating establishment, parking on the street, city offices, I think that you can see the mayor in there someplace. Then we have the State Capitol, State Capitol grounds, then we have the Senate, and finishing off with the Assembly. And the reason I showed this is, there's no vacancy here. I mean, that's a, a good thing. But what this whole area, this seven-tenths of a mile, really is, consists of six attorneys, 10 restaurants, four hotels, two salons, hair salons, five real estate offices, 14 state properties, six retails, three gyms, five unknown, I don't know how to classify them, so I didn't, three casinos, four parking lots, two gas stations, a Visitors Bureau, two empty lots, a dance studio, and a city property. I came here to present what's there. We're asking for an investment of $7 million, and if, if this was all retail, I think it makes sense. But if you look at what we have here, unless the property owners can tell me that everything that we see here will be changed to retail and a cash register, I'm not sure. I'm a little hesitant. I just ask why? I mean, where are we headed with this investment? And along that same line, if you look at what's on the horizon, which is this? This may be possible in the, in the near future, I'm not sure. But from this website, Mac Companies, this was on their website last night, I'm bringing this forward, and you can see here, these projects, I got a bigger blow up, and I'll explain what these all are. I have no explanation for it, but I want to tie it, does it tie it to narrowing of Carson Street? I'm just wondering. So what we have here, here's the State Capitol, the highlighted blue, and again, I'm speaking only how I interpret the pictures. I have emailed the individual who has this website, I have not had a response. I did call and leave a message, I have not got a response to that. But potentially, and again, it's my interpretation, the highlighted area is the potential project. And if you bear with me, what this says is the Technology Center and Technology Office Building, which again, I'm presuming is either this one, this one, or that one, or one of the four, I'm not sure. Without clarification, I have no idea. But what this is, is here, this is the Nugget as we speak, right here. And this is Stewart Street behind you, to give you some idea, and this is a parking structure, which will come up in the next slide or two. From here, this slide, about three weeks ago, was titled Hyatt 150 Keys. Today, it is Selective Service Hotel 150 Keys. To give you some reference of where we're at, this again is a Nugget. This is, I presume, the Selective Service Hotel of 150 Keys. You can see all the building behind it, parking structure here. And following up, this is the Capital Mall overview, South View, and it's kind of hard to see, so I'm going to see if I can see this a little bit better. Here's the Nugget again. This is the proposed hotel, whatever the name is. And this is Carson Street, right here. This is a parking structure, which we'll get to in a minute. Here's the State Capitol. This is the city offices right here, and directly behind it, it's showing a, a garage, which has more detail as I move forward. That is that garage. Here's the state buildings. Here's City Hall again. Capital's over here. This is a 564 car parking deck with ground floor retail and two office buildings. I'm presuming the two office buildings are back here. Again, my interpretation. Finishing it off, this is the Nugget. This is the proposed, I can't move it, the arrow won't move, but this is Carson Street right here. That's Carson Street. And on Carson Street, this website is showing, potentially, this project will put a 320 car garage deck with ground floor retail. I have to tell you, I think it's a great project. I think it's fantastic. It's private enterprise, it's private money, I hope it goes forward, I wish them the best of luck, and if they need support, I'm all for it. And if that support is, and what I can't tie together and figure out is, is narrowing this street imperative for this project to move forward? I don't know. But I'm wondering, if I know this, is this been discussed? Is this something that's on the horizon? Should we not tie it to what we're doing and what we're planning for the near future? This is pretty impressive. I don't know if I trust the website, I haven't had a response, and I've, I've reached out and asked, but I've never heard from anybody, but I would like to hear if anybody knows anything about this. Because the walk along Carson Street for $7 million of taxpayers' money, it's kind of hard to conceive, when you look at what there is, if you go back to, this is what's there. I understand it, they're businesses, but what we have is, we're investing $7 million, and as Lee's Slide 29 showed, property owners are going to, more or less, have some momentary, some gain, not momentary, but they will gain in property values. And if we're looking at the Improvement District contributing $50,000 a year, it will take like 140 years to recoup the money we're going to invest in it. I just hope we can have a discussion about this and how this all ties together. You know, also, not only did I make a presentation to the 2020 group about how to narrow the street, I also made a motion on July 17th that we should start with Curry Street. I said, shut down Curry Street, make that the walkable street. I have come to the table with different ideas and different motions of how to move forward. And even today, I'm, I know I'm inquisitive, and I ask a lot of questions, and I, I thank staff and the board for their patience, but I think this discussion should generate more questions, more concerns, and have more input from everyone who serves on the board as well. I would like to see the bigger picture, and I thank you for your time. I was hoping to do it after John, I know we got our wires crossed, and I apologize for not stepping forward, but I appreciate that. And if I'm welcome back at the board, I'll move back over there.
You're welcome back. I mean, because, you know, Jim, I'll just say, what you presented is an argument for doing what is proposed. That's enough. Hang on, hang on, that's just.
Well, that's interpretation.
Well, I know, I got you, I got you. Okay. Next public comment. We're going to go, Barbara, go ahead, come on.
I think most of you know me as shy as I am. Barbara Dino, I'm a homeowner and very active in this town. I came to the last series of meetings, which are very contentious about this subject a year ago. And I have to tell you, everybody in this room, bravo. It's wonderful to see that people are trying to work together, are really making a stab at this. And I think the infrastructure that's going to be put into place is vital to get other businesses to come to this city. If we are going to grow, yesterday I heard from 12 different women around this city, why would I go there? What am I going to buy? 10 restaurants in three blocks, while I love the food in them, seems a lot. Why is Jack's empty? Why, you know, have several other businesses in town on those streets closed? This is an opportunity to change this in terms of retain the history, but make it vital, make it interesting, make it, people want to go there. And so I have to say to the staff, and to the, particularly to the store owners, you need to be commended for the work that you have done in this past year. I, I'm so impressed coming in here today. So thank you all, and supervisors, have a great time with this.
All right. Further public comment? Garrett? Then, then we'll go here, and then, Sam, you want to come up?
Thank you. My name is Sam Flickus. I'm a machinist and a, I have a wife and son at home, and I'm a 20-something. I feel like the only 20-something here in Carson. Because my friends, who I went to high school with, when we were graduating from high school, they, you know, I, I said, you know, well, I want to live in Carson, I want to move there. I grew up in Alpine County, and I specifically moved here to Carson City when I was 19 to be in downtown, to be part of a environment that I saw when I traveled in Europe with my dad. And this is what we don't have right now. This is what we need. My colleagues want to go to places that have this, where you can just loiter. The best, most vital places economically are places where you really can loiter. And I, I know you don't want, well.
Hang on. The intent is very.
Well, a lot of my, my friends don't have a place to just be. And, you know, by tourism numbers, those places that have those wide sidewalks that accommodate for pedestrian traffic do the best. And Mr. Shirk, I know you did the presentation on how many of those places were occupied on Carson Street, but did you ever ask them, are you actually turning a profit? I mean, the storefront businesses, I mean, you know, not the lawyer's offices.
You can ask them too.
Okay, I will.
You can ask them too.
You know, just because you have a business, just because you're open, doesn't mean you're, you're doing all that well. My first job, when I got here in Carson City, I worked for a bakery that was going in the negative every year, and because there was no traffic on Carson Street, they couldn't get people in the door, and they closed up. So, and also, I think that we want wider sidewalks and bike lanes. I just got in a bike accident a couple months ago on my way home from work. And if there was a bike lane, I would have had room to turn, somebody pulled out in front of me, I was riding on their truck for a while there. And if you have a bicycle element, where people can just ride their bikes and just be able to park their bike in front of their favorite business that they're going to, just to get coffee or, or anything, I think that would be phenomenal. And if we have major development on the property that is owned by the Nugget right now, you're going to need space for pedestrians. It's not all going to be automotive transport. There's going to be higher density for pedestrians, people just walking around and, and looking in the shops. the shops. And that's what good tourist-centered cities have, is, you know, focus on the one person who's outside of the car. They do the best.
I understand, it's great points. And I did say, if this project moves forward, I understand it. And I see what narrowing of Carson Street could do if this project is to come to be. Trouble is, I can't find out where this project is on the horizon, and if it will happen or occur, then we should do something similar to what this is planned for Carson Street. But no one can answer my question if, unless you know, if the Nugget project, all of this is going forward. I don't know.
Well, I think that, I think that property values are going to go up nationwide as oil prices go up. I mean, we've seen those, we've seen those fluctuations in the market before, where, where we can't depend on, on cheap oil. I mean, we've had it, had it in the 70s, we had it just, just recently, in 2007, where it was at its highest point before the market crashed again. And I know we're low right now, but it's going to go up again. And we're not always going to be vehicle-centric. I think that we are going to move in the direction of light rail and bicycles within our cities. And I think that it's inevitable that we should move in that direction towards accommodating for the changes in the styles of traffic. Because people are going to get out of their cars. I walk everywhere I go when I can. You know, I, I moved here so that I could do that. And I'm very seriously anticipating this, because I want to be able to do that. I walk with my three-year-old son on Carson Street often, and sometimes it's dicey. It can be very dicey, you know, just being next to big rigs going, you know, 30 miles an hour down that road.
Okay.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, somebody who hasn't talked, if you want to talk. Come on up. And then Ms. Ritter, come on up.
Hi, Rob Webster, resident owner of Webster Wealth Management and new father. I am for this project. I, I, I'm happy to see it. The, to go on the bicycles, we think of people that spend $25 at a garage sale and buys a bike. This is gonna promote people that spend $10,000 for their bicycles to come downtown and spend money. Those are the people that have money to come spend. It's gonna slow down traffic. You slow down traffic, they spend more money in the businesses and the retail. Vacancy, I, I, I hope to see that we have attorneys, but they're kind of like lobbyist attorneys. If we can maybe fill those buildings with actual retail to allow these people to spend more money and spend more time in Carson City, that'd be great.
They're seasonal attorneys.
I'm sorry?
They're seasonal attorneys.
Our seasonal attorneys, yes, sir. Absolutely. And, and that would be my question for those attorneys that Supervisor Shirk took pictures of. My, I would've gone into those if they were open, because they're pretty dirty pictures in front of the doors, with the leaves and the trash.
Well, that was from Nevada Day. You can ask the attorney behind you. Ask the attorney behind you to address this issue.
Well, I know he's in his office.
You gonna stand out front?
Okay. And, but yeah, it's, it's kind of like, you know, are they filled, you know, 360 or 55 days a year? Or are they only here once every other year for the legislation to be in process? That's the question. Are they making money that way? And how's it making money for Carson?
Well, what I was alluding to is, I'd rather see a retail space than attorneys. So, that's all I was alluding to.
I agree with you.
Property owners can rent who they want to, and property owners can put a business in there, whatever they so choose.
Right.
I was just saying, if we're going to do this investment, let's get retail in there.
Right.
So, let's vacate those buildings of the attorneys and other issues that are not retail, and put retail in there in a cash register, a cash register. That's all I was kind of alluding to, although I didn't say we have to evict them either. So, I didn't say that.
Right. Because like you said earlier, it is up to the property owner to do, make that decision. So, there it is for that. So, I hope all of you get to vote yes on this, and thank you.
And I will tell you from, I've had attorneys talk to me about some of the areas that Jim showed, about putting retail on the ground floor and the, for lack of a better word, the law or lobbyist or government relations firm on the second floor.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be good. Well, I also want to say I have a, I'm a new father, so I look forward to having a safe downtown for my son.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Ritter, oh, City Manager, before you come up, Linda.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have an answer for Supervisor Shirk. There are 50, or I'm sorry, 43 different property owners that are represented in that survey that Mr. Rutledge referenced. That's from the assessor.
Okay, 43, okay. Linda. Ms. Ritter, how are you doing this afternoon?
Very well, thank you. For the record, Linda Ritter, when we had surveyed, and I was, worked with some of the property owners to find out, you know, our question was, are you interested? You know, from the property owner's perspective, we heard about a lot of, from a lot of businesses, but are property owners interested? And you have the results of those, several of them can't be here in the middle of the afternoon. And I had offered, if they so chose to, if they sent me any comments they wanted to enter to the record, I would read those comments. So, I'll do so right now. This is from Bentley and Monica Brooks, says, "We own the property at 900 North Carson Street that now houses the Bike Smith. Prior to that business, ran a bike shop there called Capital Bicycles for 12 years. The property has a big parking lot, so whatever happens to the plan for parking along the downtown corridor probably won't affect us. However, we would very much like to see a revitalized downtown where more locals and visitors would gather, shop, and dine. In our opinion, more and easy street-side parking would encourage people to stop. Is a bicycle lane really necessary?" And they put in parentheses, "Yes, this coming from bicycle people." "How about some, somewhat smaller sidewalks, no bicycle lanes and street-side parking? The best, of course, would be diagonal, but since there's probably not enough space for that, how about some parallel parking? Realize that a plan has already been chosen, and we support the Carson City project. As long as you ask however, we thought we'd pass along our thoughts." So, that's from them. Also from Mark Schmidt from Carson Jewelry and Loan, he states, "I, I of course am in favor of a decision that creates more people walking up and down Carson Street, smiling, laughing, enjoying themselves, eating, shopping, and making the cash registers sing. Doing nothing, in my opinion, is not an option. Obviously, the current plan does not seem to be the magic answer to make all involved happy, but it is definitely time to move forward and create a downtown we can all be proud of. I will not be able to make it to the community center tomorrow, but feel free to voice my opinion that it is definitely time to move forward. Looking up and down the sidewalks now, it would seem that pedestrian count cannot get any lower, so there is only one way to go, and that is up. Many businesses, in addition to ours, are putting large amounts of money into properties and remodels as we look around. So, the voices that continually state that why are the businesses not putting up the money should not have anything to stand on. Just look around and see the construction going on." Also, the gentleman, I can't get his name, because I didn't print, Steve Kaplan, he owns the Washington Square property. I don't know, he did direct me to a letter that he had posted or had sent into Carson Now. I won't read that, because it's, it's long, but he definitely supports the project, and you can certainly go onto carsonnow.org and find that letter and read it for yourself. Additionally, I had surveyed one of the property owners, Don Rosenthal, he owns the property that Heidi sits on, and he initially had indicated support for both the possible creation of a district and the project. He, he sent an email yesterday, or this morning, actually, and he made these comments after looking closer, and I think probably talking to the business owner. Because in many cases, you'll have a property owner, but the business on that property is not the same. We are at the, he gives three concerns. "We're at the very end of the development district, and that's where Heidi's is, at the very edge, the very north end of the project, and I question the value that we receive for any financial contribution that we make. It seems the primary value defaults to the businesses several blocks south of where we're located. In addition, by closing off parking on Carson Street, you negatively affect our leasees' business before and after an event while the street is barricaded. And I do agree, something needs to be done, but I don't want to participate in a project that has a negative impact on Heidi's." So, those were the comments I received from folks that couldn't be here.
Mayor, Board, Garrett Lapierre, downtown property owner, businessperson. So, maybe this will shed a little bit of light on how I see this working, Mr. Shirk. This isn't just stuff that I'm pulling out of thin air, or my, it is my opinion, it may not be fact, but I think it's, it's my opinion that's based in fact.
Garrett, Garrett, talk, I know Jim teed up one, but talk to all of us here.
You betcha. So, I think, I think over time, what's gonna happen is, property owners in the downtown core are, when pedestrian traffic picks up, which is the goal behind a project like this, they're gonna start feeling phone calls from, from businesses that are interested in being in that area. Those phone calls are gonna turn to, "I know you have X business in there now, I have X business that I want to put in there." Okay? And it will be different than what's there now. So, we can't make decisions based on what's there today, it's about what's gonna be there tomorrow. I think the project that may happen, may not happen, behind the Nugget, you know, we keep kind of shooting ourselves in the foot on making those things happen, but if that happens, you're gonna have more people that want to be part of that synergy, part of that area where someone goes, "Look at this new building, look at this new center, look at this convention center," yada, yada, yada. People are gonna want to be a part of that. And what's gonna happen is, the gym's not gonna be able to afford to be there over time. Okay? Maybe a terrible thing to say, maybe not, but that's what happens. Evolution is gonna take place. And that's how I see this happening. And that's how I see it bringing up not only downtown's property values, but guess what? Now that vacant store on the south end of town, or on the north end of town, gets that gym that had to relocate out of downtown. And it helps the whole core. That's kind of how I see that working. I think, you know, letters of intent are not allowing people to answer some of the questions that you're looking for. You know, I just find it to be disingenuous that, you know, there's gonna be support if this is passed, and then to throw up roadblocks and have presentations and do all these other things for months. I mean, we're talking, what, eight months now, nine months now? There's been plenty of time for people to put their input, plenty of public workshops. You know, I sit on a board that I couldn't even put my input in, because it was being politiced, but, you know, that is what it is. So, as a public member, I've had more opportunity to have input into this than I have as a board member, which is frustrating for me, but there's been plenty of time for people to come and do this. This is another opportunity for people to come and say, "This plan wasn't handpicked by the city and said, 'This is what we're gonna do.'" They started with something, after public workshops, several of them, they, they came back with something new. And I think this plan is 10 times better than the other plan. Is it perfect? I don't know. I, maybe, maybe not. But this process has had plenty of input, and to say that it hasn't, I just find that to be disingenuous. This needs to happen. You've, you've heard from the younger people here, that this is what they want, you know? Look at, look at Midtown in Reno, look at downtown Reno. They've invested in their business areas and the infrastructure in those areas, and it's improved them. And that's what we're doing here, is we're investing in the infrastructure of this area that is gonna in turn bring in new businesses. So, I encourage you guys to do this, that's no secret to you, but having that vision moving forward, it's not about what it is today, it's about what it can be six months from now, a year from now, after the project is completed. Thank you.
Other public comment? Hi, Morris.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Board. Morris White, for the record. I have a couple of questions, perhaps, for staff. I'm curious, we hear about what the daily traffic count is on Carson Street. I'm wondering if we know what the peak count is and, and when those peaks occur.
That information can be had, but it's not, not with us today.
Okay.
Do you have it available?
Yes, it can, yeah, it can be obtained. It's, just so you know, the traffic counts that we're using are actually derived from the Nevada Department of Transportation that does annual counts. We're not collecting those, they are, but that information can be acquired from the Nevada Department of Transportation as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Patrick. Also, we, we've heard several times that our underground utilities are in imminent danger of failure. I'm wondering, how many utility failures have occurred on Carson Street in the past
You on again, Darren? He's, he just woke him up, man. He'd been, he'd been losing sleep at night over, now he's gonna tell you.
Thank you, Darren.
One failure in the last year, well, one of the pipeline that we want to replace, there's been one failure to it in the past year.
Okay. All right. Further public comment? Anybody? All right, we're gonna bring it back here, and we'll see where it goes. Oh, you got a public, hey, here's democracy. All right.
Hello, my name is Tristan Emmanuel Robert Redlett, and I think we should have more electric cars in Carson because of pollution.
Hope you took a picture of that. You know, I'll just tell you, just to lighten it up a little bit, I had a little, your son reminds me, there was a bicycle bill in the Nevada Legislature when my son was about a little older than he was, and this bicycle bill would preclude you from riding your bicycle with no hands, and it, you could also not have sirens on, on your, whistles on your bike. So, I went to my son, who had just gotten a new bicycle, had sirens on, and I told him, well, one of the newspaper reporters, by the way, caught me in the hall of the Legislature, and he said, "You know, this, what do you think about this un-American bicycle bill?" And I said, "What do you mean by that?" He said, "Well, you can't ride with no hands. I mean, that's against the law to ride with no hands, you know?" Come on. This is 20 years ago. Brendan Riley, by the way, is the one who said that. So, I went home to my son, I said, "You want to keep your bicycle, you better go testify." Well, he went and testified, just kind of like your son did here. And you want to make sure that you keep a record of that. And sometime, I'll tell you off the record what happened. Okay. All right. Back to the board. Okay. Want to discuss, want to try, tee up a motion, and we'll discuss it.
I got a couple of questions.
Go. Questions are in order.
Okay. On this cost, the 6.85 and the 2.11, generally, what does the utilities include? If we were just to do the utility repair and nothing else, does that get us back to where we are today? Does it put the center median back in? Does it put the trees back in? Does it put paving back in?
If we were to just do the utility work and nothing else, it would cost us more than the 2.1 that we have estimated. Because of the work it would take us to put it back to match what's there now.
Okay. So, is this cost for nighttime work, or is this daytime work?
The, the overall costs? It's a combination of that, we have not got into that detail. We're looking at this project, if we move forward, we're looking at possibly doing this project C-MAR, which will get the contractor, potential contractor involved early, and we'll start having those discussions about, but the way I would see it in the future, I think it's gonna, certain things are gonna happen at night, and certain things are gonna happen during the day. It's gonna be a pain to the businesses, there's no doubt about that, but our goal would be to minimize that as best we can.
So, is the 6.8 and the 2.1 high side, low side, could it be 10.4? Could it be?
The way, the way we are approaching this is, we have a finite number, and we have to design and build it to that number. And that's what we've committed to, and that's what we're gonna do.
Other questions?
Just a couple of comments. One, I thank you, Sam, and I thank you for your comments. Those are the voices of the future, and I think that's really important. What we're looking, what we see now is not what we're building to, we're building to for the future. And I feel that that's our job in going forward with this particular item. And I just want to point out, recent statistics quote bicycling as the number-two recreation in the nation. So, this is the right direction.
Let me ask, Patrick, let me ask you a question. If you were designing a highway today, with the traffic counts that you know of on Carson Street, would you design a four-lane highway, or a two-lane, or a six-lane highway?
Well, it wouldn't be a highway. Yeah, if you were, if you were designing it today, this is what you'd be, this is what you'd be designing for. You wouldn't be designing for what we have out on the road, because it's not necessary.
And I know you mentioned it a little bit, but I mean, you know, I think that one of the, and I know you're gonna be looking you know, I think that one of, and I know you're going to be looking at it, but, you know, six lanes going, when this freeway gets done, six lanes going south, I just have difficulty understanding, you know, how we're going to, we have to do something there, but I don't know what it is. I mean, because that's just a lot of space.
Are, you're talking about on South Carson Street?
Yeah, South Carson Street.
Yes. Yeah, after the, after the freeway opens the traffic, South Carson Street will be relinquished to Carson City like the rest of Carson Street already has. As Lee mentioned previously, and I alluded to, further design will have to happen there, but we do expect a substantial decline in traffic volumes on South Carson Street, you know, on the order of magnitude of 15,000 to 20,000 cars per day, and certainly below that, which you'd need six lanes for. So, well, certainly, we have to do design, have to study it, look at the alternatives for what to do with the space. We don't believe that we would need six lanes to accommodate that traffic.
Well, I think we also got to be, you know, friendly, well, I'm just trying to think down the road, to get some thoughts in my own mind here. Okay. John, did you have another question? I'm sorry.
Yes. Just to define what we're doing here today, the recommended board action is approve conceptual design. Direct staff to continue to implement the project design schedule, et cetera. Does that mean if we vote for this today, that this is going to be built? Does that mean it could be stopped later on? Does that mean, what does it mean? What are we voting for today?
The, what you're voting for today is the, the concept of the design, the lanes, the way we have it drawn out between, between the buildings. That's what's, we need the go-ahead today to keep the process moving. So, the next steps are going to be to go out and start forming the, the business improvement districts and awarding, soliciting for design teams, architecture, landscape architectures to submit on moving this design forward. This is the basics. Now, we need to really build a project, and there will be public input outreach during that process as well. So, that's, that's what we need to go ahead for today, or stop.
Brad.
No, we've put the timeline up. That may help kind of bring it more into focus. Again, as Darren said, today's the conceptual design. We're going to continue working with the property owners and the business owners on the Cav as we step into now the much more detailed design work that's going to really take place over the course of basically half a year. So, there's still going to be quite, quite a bit more work that needs to be done before we come back to the board again with a final design.
Brad, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I have some comments. I like the design. I think that this is just one step of a long road that we have to take, and there are other requirements that need to be met before we break ground on this. I think it's critical that this is a partnership between public and private sectors. I think that the business improvement districts are a must. But this is, not only is this just one step of a long road of steps that we must take just to get this portion of the project done, this is only one phase of many phases of the overall project. And I think that we need to keep that in the forefront, that this isn't about downtown. It includes downtown. But it's about addressing issues that we have in our city on all of our commercial corridors, including, as we mentioned before, ADA, ADA compliance issues that we've had ongoing for years, additional street lighting for safety, bike lanes, and wider sidewalks for pedestrian and bike safety. All of these things need to happen throughout our commercial corridors and not just in downtown. This is just the first step. Another critical component of this for all of our commercial corridors, and going back to my first comment about a partnership between public and private sectors, private developers want to make sure that the city that they invest in is also going to make investments in their infrastructure and in their city, so that it does become a partnership. And this is what I do. I talk to these developers all the time, so I have a very good understanding of what they're looking for before they invest literally millions of dollars in a city. They look at demographics, they look at traffic counts, they look at all that. But they also want a commitment from the city that they're investing in that they're going to be a partner, and that the city governments cares about what their city looks like and the safety. Going back to South Carson, it's not just the six lanes of traffic, but we also have the medians and the frontage road that we'll have to address down there as well. So, there's an extensive amount of additional space down there that will have to be designed for and incorporated into, into this project going forward. So, that's, that's basically my comments. I'm definitely in favor of this, as I have been all along. I just think that we need to do it right every step of the way.
City Manager, Nick, what's the latest from NDOT on completion of the freeway, or at least through Spooner? I mean, up there.
Yep. We just had a very good collaborative meeting with them yesterday. They expect to go out in February with an advertisement. That'd be February 2015. They're projecting to be complete by 2017. They throw a caveat in there, if everything goes right, they could finish up by the end of 2016. So, the timelines that were-
By 2016, they'll finish up?
No.
I didn't hear that.
No, no, they, they said 2017, but they said, hey, if everything goes right, all the planets line up, it could be a little sooner.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
No, absolutely, yeah, exactly that. It's, it depends on things like, you know, what are winters going to be like?
Right.
How much can they build? So, they're, they're sticking with 17 with, we'll see how the weather holds.
So, if you look at the timelines, it would, the timelines of the downtown corridor project and the completion down at Spooner Junction are actually fairly complementary in terms of when we're projecting to begin and complete construction and when the freeway construction will be complete down at Spooner.
Okay.
Bob, but I was at that meeting also, and they also put caveats in such as, "It could be late 17. It could be even later than that, depending on what the feds do." You know, hopefully, it will be early 17. I wouldn't count on 16, but NDOT, there are many different opinions in NDOT. I'll put it that way.
Well, it's not just, you know, I don't ask just because of this. I mean, it's obviously one of the issues here. And I know that NDOT knows this. But we're killing people on Fairview Drive. And we got to, I mean, they know that. I mean, we got to get that, keep pushing. I mean, killing people's the wrong word. I mean, it's just, it's, it's very destructive in that area. So, we got to, we have to find, we have to move, move it along, so, okay. All right, other comments, questions? We ready for a motion? Motion's in order, Supervisor Ray, and then we'll see where it goes.
I move to approve the conceptual design for the downtown Carson Street project and direct staff to continue to implement the project design schedule, including working with downtown property owners to establish a commercial area revitalization district.
Second.
Motion in a couple of seconds. Discussion, Mr. Shirk, Super Jim, go.
You know, I agree with what Brad just mentioned. I think he brought up some fantastic points, and he's right, right on target with what he said. And I agree with him. And what, what my presentation here was tonight about was for conversation. It is to stimulate conversation between the board members and the public. And what has been often misinterpreted is because I have voted against this project due to the fact, the simple fact, and I've argued this every time I voted, that it is, we should be using redevelopment funding. We shouldn't have created a tax for this. That is a basis for every time I have voted no on this. I have never said I'm against the project. Matter of fact, I help a citizen present something to the 2020 group, as I said, and to Public Works, how to narrow the street. I've never said I'm against this project. I've never said it's a bad idea. I've never said that the concept is just stupid. I've never said anything that I've been quoted in the paper as saying. I've continually said it is the funding mechanism I'm not in favor of. I do not believe we should create new taxes to, to create something where we have the funding available. We can do it from redevelopment. That's my argument. I know others can argue, "No, we can't." I think we can. The project which I brought forward, it is on the worldwide web. I'm not bringing in forward some dark secret. I'm not shooting myself in the foot by bringing it forward. This is out there. It's knowledge. Anybody can access this. That project is there. Is it going to happen? I have no idea. But I sure hope it does, because it'd be fantastic for Carson City. I support this project. I support the ideas. I do not support the funding mechanism for this project, and that's why I will again vote against this.
Okay. On the motion, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Four to one, okay. You got, I don't know who's taking, okay. All right, hang on, okay. All right. We're concluding public comment time. Anybody? Morris, you want to come up concluding? Let's be respectful, folks. Hang on, hang on a second. This is concluding public comment. I mean, we, this is a requirement of law, and it's the right thing to do.